Everyone, thank you for joining us at our July 18th Planning Board meeting. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of mishap and now join us as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I would like to personally thank my esteemed colleague to my left, Vice Chairman Groninger, for running a -- so able to be running a really good meeting last time. On that note, I get a motion to reopen the public hearing for Dollar General.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hemula, Mr. Longo are not here suddenly.
They're outside.
They were just here.
Yeah, we opened the public hearing, we're just waiting for you guys to come up, sorry. As a reminder for the record, it's Todd Hemula and Chris Longo of Ingalls representing the applicants tonight. And I want to congratulate you, you did a very good job of summarizing everything for the meeting last time, I watched it all just today on YouTube, so I think you did a very nice job. And I made some notes, just sort of an overall comment, since it seemed to be neglected by the board last time. Our zoning administrator has not been attending meetings lately because she has family obligations, her son's got some lessons. But I heard questions last time about the separation between the propane tank and the dumpster enclosure, it was going to be 50 feet, et cetera, and that we were assured to be bollards around it. I spoke to Tad before I came here, show those on the final set of plans, show everything that's external on the final set of plans. It just speeds you through at the end, you don't want to wait and get there and then have to wait two weeks for a C E O when you think you're having your grand opening because there are things that she didn't see. So just make certain that those are on there. Also to address, a quick note, at the last meeting, I believe you requested that would it be okay from the board to use the same materials for the fences for the dumpster enclosure? I never heard the board respond, but I think it's okay, I think it's actually better than doing a concrete enclosure. Everyone agree?
No problem.
That's out of the way then. Since the last meeting that was conducted in my absence, we've had a new lighting plan. I want to thank you for the light fixtures and for reducing the foot candles, they're now down to within Greenway standards. We were submitted today, for the public's benefit, a conceptual letter of approval from New York State Department of Transportation noting that they have conceptually approved of where the entrance is proposed to be located, there are some details that may need to change, but it's fairly minor. Signage has not specifically been submitted. In an email with Mr. Hemula today, it appears that you're going to come back and present the sign package at some point down the line, because some variances are needed, or do you know?
No, I know that they do want to approach for some larger signs on the building, and I think that there's some relief that they'd be looking for, I think 12 inches is what's allowed, permitted by code.
10 inches was permitted by code, but the planning board has discretionary authority to go up an inch every 20 feet, you're setback from the primary entry.
Okay.
So before you go to the Z B A, we'll need to do a resolution granting as much dimensional increases as we can, because by law, they have to give the minimum variance, area variance that they can. So if we have an ability to say, let's let it go up two inches, and you need it to go, say, from 12 ultimately to 18 or 20, they have to give the variance on just the difference on what it is that we can give versus the total you're asking for. So maybe at the next meeting, we can schedule that out? If we have sufficient information to proceed, because the sign package was submitted separately, I believe, to Ms. Moss.
Right, so we were, if they want approval within the next two weeks, you're not going to have the variances, so signs are going to have to be off the plans.
Okay, and we would-
They're at the bonus separately.
We would be fine with that, removing the signage from the site plan.
You can just do a placeholder.
Yes, correct. So should I show on the elevations just a box area without the sign on there?
Right, and again, you don't have to do that right now, that's before, you know, we get the final set to sign off, assuming there's an approval.
Right, it would just be a condition.
But we should still, at the next meeting, I think, try to go ahead and grant the increase, Victoria, so that can go to the, are we in the rush, no?
Is it 30 feet back or 20?
I have Tad's review letter, we'll work on this later on.
Okay.
As was mentioned at the last meeting by Mr. Sotero, we were looking for, still looking for a conceptual letter of approval from Department of Health. In just a quick conversation I had with him before this meeting, it appears that you've done all your modeling now to calculate pre and post-development runoff rates, he's comfortable with them, so what was worrying me was, in the last meeting, there was mention made that you might need another water holding area, water tank or something underneath the pavement, and if so, I was wondering where your septic was going to go then, because it's pretty tightly designed right now, but you don't need any more water holding tanks. The only question I had from the last meeting was, Mr. Sotero, do you think that an eight-inch pipe is sufficient to regulate or keep enough water going through those drainage easement off-site under Mr. Lawson's property?
Yes, and I did talk to, I did talk to Chris yesterday, because Andy Lern and myself had some thoughts about how we're going to, how we're going to keep that eight-inch pipe open and cleared, especially if we have to worry about leaves. So we've got some, we've got some thoughts that I really didn't want to get into at all, and, yeah, a letter that, you know, we'll work directly with the engineer's office, and we think we can, we can come up with something that'll be fairly easy to maintain.
Rather than a condition of approval, this could be a note added to the final set?
No, we'll work it out with them, you know, before we get to approval.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Then that's pretty much all I had from the last meeting. Let me turn it over to you, is anything new you wanted to address, Mr. Hemula?
Well, I know that there was, there were two other items, I think, that we went back and forth on, and maybe that's between the meeting and today. One of the, I think, one of the comments from the D O T letter indicated that there's a water line easement, and we're showing our, our street trees within that water line easement. We will move those into the site so that they're not on the easement, and I think they'll, they'll reflect the street tree concept of being on the front of the site like they do now. But, you know, on one end, it'll be a little, about 10 feet further back, on the other end, it might be a couple feet further back.
It looks like it's narrower the closer, the further south you go.
It is, it is. And then, you know, the issue with the signage, I remember, I remember we were going back and forth on getting a letter of authorization, and I don't know if anybody remembers that, and I was getting something from the attorney where he named me and my company as signator so that we could, you know, we could submit on behalf of the signage company. And I, I thought that where we left it is that the, somebody on the town side was looking for a letter, a little bit more specific, so that we could submit the signage. And so as a result of that, that's really why I think the signage just kind of stopped in its process of its submission. And since we are where we are on the point of the project, I'm okay with removing it from the plans, and that it kind of takes its own general course.
It's, there are two ways to get signs approved, one is through a site plan, the other is through a site permit.
Yep.
It's $50 permit for all your signage, and so if you're, if you're through the site plan with it approved, it doesn't show the specific signs, you have to go through the other process, and if they're visible from 909G, they have to have a recommendation from us before Ms. Moss can issue it.
I see.
But your bigger issue is just getting in the, I think, the well, so to speak, the pipeline for the Z B A to give the variances.
Sure, sure.
And if it's a holdup on our side, I'll speak to Ms. Moss, if we're waiting.
Well, I provided their attorney with language, but he actually wanted me to draft him the letter that just needed to be signed, and I did not do that. I asked him to put it into a letter form.
And so the two attorneys are waiting now.
I can go ahead and draft the letter, but I need to charge Dollar General to do that, so.
Okay, then we'll make sure on our side that the signage is dealt with.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're right, that was a couple, like, two, three weeks ago, that's why I think it escaped me on why, why that had an advance, maybe a little bit further, and that's, that's exactly why. We need to also contact the fire department, I think there was a communication issue on our side where we didn't realize that they were going to provide comment to the plans, so we will reach out to the fire department and ask them if they have any, any comment to the circulation for fire.
Well, they're not involved, and typically, this fire department responds within 30 days, they are an interested agency always, and they often send representatives of the fire department here to meetings to make comments, both for the public discourse, they also provide written comments usually.
Yep.
One of the comments that you're going to see from them automatically is, they like to see a Knox box installed, I believe that's what it's called, it's a little box that you order through them, but it keeps the key to your front door, so that if there's a false alarm, they're not breaking into your front door every time.
Exactly, exactly.
The other issues they may have are, they'll discuss with you, I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Groninger mentioned that there are issues with the water line that goes down, or goes up, how you want to look at it, 9G. There are hydrants that are located around on 9G that are not fire-rated, they don't have enough pressure to provide anything, so that's something that we should, that you should contact them just to make certain that whatever source, water source they'd be looking at, in the event of mishap there, is going to be sufficient to fight it. The other things they typically look at are, is your opening for your entry, is your radius open, is it wide enough for their equipment, things like that. As close as you are to 9G, I don't think any of those issues will be paramount, because they can fight the fire by closing 9G and just stopping there.
Right, right. There was, there was an individual here at the first meeting, not the public meeting, but the first meeting, and he, not the public hearing, and he, the question he raised to me, and I think he was from the fire department representing maybe the fire chief, was whether or not we were going to fully sprinkle the building. So we did, I talked to him a little bit about that, because he said that we've, you know, we've installed these water lines, and it's, there's pressure there for you to have a sprinkler system, and I explained to him that we, it's not our intentions to, primarily because the building is sized accordingly by code. And then I thought, well, anyway, we'll follow up with him later on this week, but I, I think that we're going down the right path.
You have a, you're part of the newer water line system, I believe you really do have pressure.
Yep, yep.
We just want to make certain, because it was sort of a surprise for the planning board at the time. We came in, most of us, at the end of that project to find out that the hydrant wasn't fire-rated, it had never come out before, so now we ask that question just automatically to make sure that we don't have, again, little hiccups at the very end to slow you down. Anything else?
The last item I'll bring up is regarding the building elevations, and I know at the, at the public hearing when it was opened up, the question was asked about whether or not we could address the southern facade, and if we could, you know, treat it so that the if come of when the trees should go, could go away south of the site. So we had kind of addressed it already by extending that, the front of elevation details around the side, and what we did is we just extended it down a little bit further. I don't remember hearing too many specific comments about that at the public hearing when we extended that, and it sounds like there might be some interest in having some windows on the building, not the real, real kind of windows, but more false-type windows to give it that, you know, that, that image, I think like a lot of the other buildings have in town. And I'm not objectional to that, but I wasn't, I didn't get, I don't think I got the indication that it was necessary, so if it is, if it is something-
Well, make it clear it's a noise.
If it is something that I think is desired, I'd like to hear that. I did email to a few of you, I guess, what it could look like, so I do have that kind of floating out there, and we-
Does anybody have this? Everybody have this?
It's in our boxes.
It's in your boxes.
We can, we can accommodate that request, but, you know, understand, you know, when we're designing these buildings, everything's, I guess, kind of a balance, and we're trying to design it to meet, you know, what the requirements are for the town, and, you know, you know, and then when it gets influenced by things like, questions and requests like this, you know, we just try to balance it to make sure that, you know, that they're required or necessary or not. In this case here, I guess I just might have missed it last meeting, so if that's something that's, I guess, completely necessary as part of the project, just, just let me know, and I, I think that that might be something we can accommodate.
Generally speaking, because our code requires us to look at when we have architectural elevations for there to be, as you know, a break in mass, windows are an easy way to achieve it. In addition, there's a lot of residences around this, as you know, and so adding windows makes it more residential in character.
Sure.
It's a commercial building.
Sure.
And also, the board, I think, nicely gave in to what we don't normally do, which is not allowing flat roofs to disguise this, so I think that the concern certainly on my part was more that, when I looked at the elevation, it looked sort of like a movie theater, you know, with just long expanses of blank wall there. Even with the plasterers cutting it up, I think that the windows do a better job, but you'll hear that when we get up here.
Okay, okay.
Anything else from you guys?
I don't think so.
Okay, any additional comments, Mr. Sotero?
Nope, at the moment.
Ms. Palladaro?
No.
Gee, I talk long enough, I show everybody else up, good. Let me start then down to the left, Mr., where am I, Mr. Sigman?
Thank you. No, I, I know we just mentioned those windows, it will make a difference in the view, so I think you should.
That's, that's a favorable comment, and for the windows, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Number one is, very niche with me, and I do like the windows, I think, much improved.
Thank you. Mr. Groninger?
Having been involved in some commercial enterprises, where I owned a business long before getting on the planning board, I'm well aware of concerns that get raised about septic systems, getting too close to water, or, I'll call them natural systems, of getting water flow out of your roof and parking lot. I'm very curious how you're ever going to get all that together on a lot this small, so I'm anxiously awaiting some additional input to come into us from New York State, how we're ever going to get it, or from P.
Health Department.
Health Department. I mean, it's just, I don't see how we're going to do it, and I, I wish we had that answer at this point, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. Secondly, I definitely support windows, et cetera, I mean, that's just a long, long expanse of plain wall. You know, we talked about that at the last meeting, and I guess my last comment, I know we discussed the whole generator situation, I'll give you a recap in the last month, I've had four outages, one hour, an hour and 30 minutes, two hours, and over three hours. And I'm only three miles from where you are, so think about your generator question.
Thank you, I believe that in the last meeting, the corporation intends to bring in temporary generators, have I heard that correctly?
Correct.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, where do they, would they store them someplace centrally, so all the stores in the area could have one, or do you know?
No, my understanding is they would, they would rent them from a local, from a local rental agency, have them, you know, on standby, have a contract, have a relationship. It sounds like in this area, it's more problematic than maybe other areas where they would, you know, would have a store. But that was, when I asked the question of Dollar General, how they want, how they operate, and what do they plan for when it comes time to emergencies, you know, they, they don't have it onsite, and they don't plan for it onsite, if it happens, then they, you know, they go.
I could assure you, my own personal business, multiple times, we were just flat down, uninterrupted power source, didn't run the cash register very long.
Sure, sure.
I will point out that, just two things, one, Mr. Groninger is just saying this out of an abundance of concern, so that your store doesn't wind up with melted frozen stuff, because when we have power outages, it's not frequent that people come out and start shopping.
Oh, no, if I'm not saying it's required, and I'm only concerned at the last minute you drop a generator in permanently.
Well, if you do, trust me, Ms. Moss will make you come for a site plan amendment.
Sure.
So I said, show everything you can on the final set of plans, show everything. We don't need new plans for these small iterations, so show the landscape changes right now, we just need to, once we know that they're going to be done, just need to be done on the final plans. Ms. Dexter?
I too share Mr. Groniger's, Groniger's concern about the separation between the septic and the water on site, so waiting to hear how that works out. I just saw this, thank you very much, this is, this could be a really nice addition. I didn't know you were going to do this, so I brought you a picture of, in the city of Poughkeepsie, they did a, basically a standard box store, but they were, they were asked to break it up and not have flat roofs, and if I could show that, you can come up and take this, it's just the front view, and it shows their fake windows, and, so it looks like you've picked something that, that would also work. The one thing in looking how you're placing them-
Were you able to print the elevation that I sent along with it?
Yes.
Oh, yes, good.
Our secretary copied them.
Yep, nope, we're looking at them right here.
Great.
So the only thing I might ask is, as I'm looking at this, I see on the parking lot side, you have the four windows going all the way down.
Yes.
That last one may not be necessary, because you have that door there, it looks, you know-
I, I kind of agree.
Yeah.
I already x'd mine out.
And you might take that one and put it on the other side, so you have three and three windows on either side, but you don't have anything in the front. And so if you look at that kind of elevation there, they kind of have a bow window, a bay window or something in the front, that looks visually different but ties everything in, so if I could ask.
You may ask.
I would love to see windows, and I would like to see them on the front, too.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
In other words, to have another window there, reduce, getting rid of that one, this is not my own-
Oh, I can give you mine, I already marked it up.
There you go.
Yep, I know the one you're talking about by the receiving door in the back.
Yes.
And then I think in the front, we do have a bay in the front where I think you could add one.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Is that already signed in?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
I'd have to agree with my colleagues, you know, I think that, that third window on the, the south facade, I think that would be a great addition, and something on the, on the eastern facade there along 9G, I think that'd be great. And again, I'm, I'm interested to see what you're going to do with, with the drainage and septic, you know, especially with that, with that, under the parking lot kind of holding system that you're going to do with the gravel, it's, I'm interested to see how that plays out.
Thank you. Mr. Mriglione?
Yeah, I like the windows, and I'm glad that you're going to work on the elevations and see if we can make them more interesting.
Thank you. Thank you, then let me make it unanimous for the windows, I'll be number seven. As I said in my email to you, I'm sorry there wasn't just a little more direction up here to say, is this what we want, where are we going, et cetera, but I think you've heard now.
Well, I think it also was because we had just seen the, we didn't really have time to, we saw that you had shown us like that night, I think, how you wrapped it.
Ah.
So we really didn't have a chance to, like, absorb it.
Right.
You know, it did look like it was a change, but it-
It's, I usually don't even let the planning board comment on changes shown at the last moment, because we need time to think about them and take a look, so, and it's the way that people kind of sneak things in on us.
Well, when I got the comment about 4:15, I called the architect, and I said, listen, can you, before you leave, can you do this, so I can at least have a visual? So it was just more, I'm glad I-
I know, we're commenting now, because this is-
You get some comments, and that way, when I, when I send something in later this week or early next week, it'll, it'll have at least some input, which I'm, I'm very happy, thank you.
I think, as I said, it's also, it's, it's a good exchange for the way you articulated that the flat, to disguise the flat roof, it gives a little more character along the way. So is, is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment about this application? I know Mr. Royce?
He's not going to be coming tonight.
Royce?
Royce.
We spoke last time, anybody else would like to speak? Yes, could you come up and just state your name, sorry to receive, please state your name and address for the record and the microphone?
Good evening, Kirk Rasko, 1029 Violet Ave. I own the property 128 feet south of the proposed site here. Just curious about the south side of this site, your last meeting, you discussed a fence, Mr. Sotero suggested vinyl, just, I, I didn't hear a final decision on that, and I'm assuming that's only six feet high?
It cannot be any taller than six feet by our own code. If it has to be taller than six feet to, to provide screening, then they have to get a variance from the Z B A, and it's not something that we can compel unless the, the screening is so important. With this, you have an intervening parcel that has, that's fully planted out right now, has trees blocking, but it's very, we've grappled with this before, sometimes because of the grade changes in Hyde Park, the building that's next door that's supposed to be screened, the house sits up like 30 feet, and the six-foot fence does nothing. So it's, it's a matter then of us trying to figure out what plantings can help kind of mitigate that, so.
So that is vinyl, then?
Actually, I did not hear a response, a conclusion there either, but I believe it was going to be vinyl.
It could be vinyl matched up.
That's what I thought.
Like an earth tone.
And then last meeting, you also mentioned that you would not be planting anything, I'm, I'm curious about that, only because, only being 128 feet away, I can clearly see Doxey's Jim's Auto Body during the winter, obviously the leaves fall, I'm just curious why there wouldn't be any new plantings, you're going to-
The, well, the space between, between the wall and the building is sufficiently tight that a tree wouldn't grow there. I mean, you might have, you might maybe have some arbor viti, we can take a look at that, but it's a very tight space. And then the planning board is legally not allowed to require off-site improvements, meaning we can't say go into the neighboring parcel and plant evergreens, because they don't own it. That's where you'd probably like to have evergreens to block your view, I take it, would be on that, that in-between parcel, between you and-
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah, and they're deciduous trees everywhere there, so they fall off, and during the winter, you have full view.
Correct.
The board can take a look, we'll take a look at if there could be any plantings along that side, I don't-
It's really tight.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very tight, and in addition, one of the reasons why, if you've been following the meetings, one of the reasons why this site doesn't support a lot of plant life in the front anyways, because the soil's really bad, it's mostly fill that was brought in on top of a pre-emergent wetland, so you have stone, rock, bad material there. They're going to grind this up and use it, I believe, underneath the driveway, so they'll be bringing in new soil, but we can take a look to see if there's a way to shift around some of the landscaping to provide better screening for your property.
There might be some opportunities, Michael, just, you know, looking, looking at the plan there.
I've got, we have, I have the small sets, so it's kind of hard to see, that's why.
Remind me.
Which leads me to the next topic, the back, that's the southwest side, so this is a receiving dock, propane and garbage, right? I'm just very concerned about sight, sounds, smell. I'm not sure, I'm comfortable, it's just a fence that goes around these little structures, and so there, there will be tractor trailers backing into this receiving dock, is it, oh, okay.
I'm just nodding, because for the purposes of seeker, and I hate saying this, because it makes me sound like I'm a real creep, but seeker is for community-wide impacts, meaning they're significant, so I have to tell some, to people who live next door to a site, they don't want to see it go up, seeker is not a remedy for, to alleviate your specific concerns, because those are your specific ones. There are sections of the code that deal with screening between residential and non-residential uses, so as I said, it's up to the discretion of the board to see what we think is, I, the best kind of screening we can get, given the practical limitations of the site, so we can take a look more closely to see if we can shift some of the landscaping or add a tree there, or something along the corner. The smells, that happens to, I mean, that's the reason why it's, you have a container around it in the first place. This isn't a food processing venture, they sell food, but it's groceries, it's not going to be, in other words, food preparation, so there won't be food waste going outside, and that should mitigate some of the smells, plus, as you said, you're 128 feet away. I don't know how far scent travels, but I have a feeling that it kind of goes up in the, I'm not an engineer, but I think it would probably go up in the atmosphere rather than going right down to your house.
Hmm.
Sound, by the way, is, the sound is, with all due respect, again, I'm going to sound like a creep, you're going to hate me, but this has been zoned commercial for quite some time, so-
I am well aware, I'm just gathering information.
Yeah, so the sounds would be, I think if, if we thought that the sounds had risen to the level of a seeker issue, we'd have asked for a noise impact study, but the sounds of a once or twice-a-week delivery vehicle are, when you're right up on 9G, are probably going to be lost into the sound of the 9G traffic, because you know what the sound is like there anyway, it's a fairly busy highway.
Absolutely. So that leads into the next, the D O T's conceptual letter of acceptance, so this letter states that there will be no impact on 9G?
The applicants are required, under the environmental assessment form, to indicate what the daily vehicle trips will be, and also the number of hourly vehicle trips. So what that is, is traffic engineers, it's called the International Traffic Engineers Association, they put out a manual, it's updated periodically, I think every few years, and what they do is they take, they'll say, this is a retail, that says this kind of retail, it's this size. And based on that, they'll generate an average number of, daily number and hourly number of vehicle trips, so in and out. So DOT receives that information, and if they have concerns and they tell us, they require a traffic impact study. But I can tell you, having done this for nine years up here, for a building this size with this many parking stalls, they wouldn't consider it to be an impact on 9G, because 9G's been built to handle a lot of traffic. But DOT, trust me, they will ask for it. A good example is for Dunkin' Donuts on 9, the new one.
Yep.
Because it was so close to the intersection, they required a full traffic impact analysis there. Then we require it as well.
I'm just curious, only because of a minor fender bender at the chrome elbow intersection, traffic is backed up for a mile. I mean, it's just, that's my concern.
Well, the DOT still has to, I mean, they, they still have to look at, you know, the detailed plans as part of the highway work process.
Correct.
So, you know, it's, it is, it is possible that they may ask for more information from the applicant.
But I would highly doubt that there'd be a traffic signal considered for them.
Oh, no, no, no.
Because there are things they call warrants, meaning is it warranted? It's like a criteria? And this project is so small, it wouldn't hit, even begin to hit any of the warrants that are necessary for a traffic line. I mean, it's possible that they may look at it and say, we need to slow the speed down, but even then I doubt that, because the speed's already pretty low in that area.
Right, it starts to slow down right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are all good questions, by the way.
No, I would love a, a, a quick little tour with Todd and Chris at some point as this progresses, was, which it seems like it most definitely is, right? This is, this is going to happen.
Well, we don't know that yet. That's why we're still waiting on Department of Health. And it's illegal for any of us also to advance how we're going to vote, so you never know if it's going to be approved or not. But I mean, it's zoned commercial, and this is, I think generally speaking, considered to be a good use for the area and for the community. It provides a lot of shopping services in an area on 9G where there's none right now. I am aware, if I were a neighboring house, I'd be thinking about the fact there'd be more traffic there as well. But the traffic numbers that I saw show that it's actually pretty staggered throughout the day. They don't have one huge peak at a time, so they shouldn't be impacting, say, rush hour. There would be more people coming in at rush hour just because people are coming off from work and may want to shop then. But the array of products they have, greeting cards to motor oil, to foodstuffs, it's, it's going to be, I think, servicing a lot of the immediate surrounding communities there.
Understood. Little mini Walmart, right?
That's how they describe it in the company, in the campaign, that is how they describe it in the campaign, or I mean, in their promotional material, is something like, I mean, really mini, if you think about Walmart being 140,000 square feet. This doesn't have a pharmacy, it doesn't have a nursery, but it's got some of the same kinds of products, just small amount.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rasko. Would anyone else from the public like to speak about this application? And by the way, my responses will also, I mean, Mr. Hamila can also add to those responses if you want to. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, there being no more. Chris and Todd, if you want to come back up. We will adjourn the public hearing to August the 6th, our next meeting. In the meantime, would it help if Pete and I started contacting Jim Napoli as well? I mean, we're happy to if that will assist.
I did actually speak with him again this week, and there was, I guess, some miscommunication there as well. I, I had sent him the plans a couple of weeks back through email and the application form through email. And he also received some plans from, from the SEAKER coordination, but I don't, I don't know exactly how it got mixed up, and he didn't end up reviewing the plans until, until just now, or I, I'm not sure if they got there today. But he should have another hard copy set. So he will be looking at the plans. And kind of to address some of your concerns about the separation, we do have a design in place there to provide that barrier between the storm system, oh, we do have a, we do have a design in place to provide that separation between the storm system and where the septic field will be. So, and, and also, this is kind of a unique site whereas it's a, it's an entirely a cut site and fill due to the, to the prior, prior fill on the site. So there will be obviously some, some care taken to provide suitable fill in enough of the area as, as deemed adequate. So we have been working on that design, and I did contact Jim again on that. So, so we will work diligently to, to get a conclusion to that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hamila, before we meet next time, can you take a look to see if you can add any landscaping in that? There's this, at the corner of the building where the fence is coming along this way, there might be some room to add something.
There is. I mean, there is, there is, there is some.
Remember, evergreens are really slow growing is one of the problems. The only fast-growing evergreens are white pines, and white pines lose their ability to do screening very shortly because they lose their lower limbs. So we're not going to, whatever is planted there isn't going to provide a lot of screening anytime soon for Mr. Rasko immediately, unless you maybe did arbor viti or something like that. And even then...
Deer take care of them.
Deer take care of them, and plus, snow causes them to wilt and break when they get too tall. So I'll ask, Ms. Moss, and I'll take a look too to see if there's anything we can figure out that might help. But I think the fence, there's no fence around Jim's auto body, so I think the fence should be sufficient to do it. I believe also, there's a grade change gradually going down into that area of 9. I'll go look.
Uh, well...
Not a lot, but I think it's like a photo show.
They're going to fill, they're going to fill some of it to bring...
Right, some of it up. But, and there was, and I think 9G actually descends as you go south slightly there, so it might be that him looking up would still see more of the sign. Plus, it's, what he'd see above the fence line wouldn't be an attractive-looking building, it'd actually block his view of Jim. So I think this is going to be a better site for everybody along the lines. That's what the planning board's been trying to do with the windows. And yes, you'll take a look at redoing the windows a little bit with your architect. I appreciate you turning on a dime so quickly. And anything else you want to add? We'll look to conclude SEAKER in three weeks. I think it's three weeks, right?
Right. And should we establish a cutoff date so we have time to prepare resolutions for the next meeting?
What we'll be looking to do, I think in two weeks would be, in three weeks would be to conclude SEAKER, and if possible, if we've heard from the fire department that we could also close the public hearing, we might have to take action that night. We could wait until the next meeting to take final action. Would that be better for you?
Well, I mean, we could take action that evening, too, but if there are going to be revised plans, we should get them at least a week in advance.
Did you catch that? What we're thinking is, if we get the fire department comments, and that doesn't require any, any changes on your part, and we get DOH, we can go ahead and conclude SEAKER in three weeks. We could then, if there are no more public comments, we could close the public hearing and wait to take action based on you submitting any final plans. We'll need to have the final plan submitted at least a week before we do the final resolution. Ideally, it'd be more like 10 days for us to take a look at everything. But it's up to you, in other words, as to how you want to proceed. I anticipate, in other words, that we could get through with this completely within, by the second meeting of August, assuming that we've allayed the concerns of Mr. Rasko, Mr. Royce, I've got to try to say the name correctly. And that's just the drainage on his part, is if I recall from the meeting.
We're taking care of the drain.
So as long as we get DOH, we can conclude SEAKER. And then once, if we hear from the fire department, those are really all the outstanding things we're waiting to hear from. The rest will be just getting some new, minor changes in some ways with the windows, but major changes to those sitting up here. So would you think you could have plans submitted a week before the next meeting, so we could try to take action that night to conclude SEAKER and consider an approval?
Yes, yes.
Why did I say that? No, we have, we have an extra week of July this month, don't we?
That means they have one week to get them to us.
Oh, right, right. You have one week to get them to us, that means. That's okay?
I mean, next week.
It's two weeks, right. Because it's August 6th. So you have two weeks in which to get them to us. And I mentioned this in an email, but I can't say it strongly enough. Sometimes with the Department of Health, it's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. Am I drift?
Well, and they're backed up, too. I mean, you know, we have, I mean, just because you guys have handed something in in the last two to three weeks, it doesn't really, like, mean anything. I mean, we've had things into them for, like, a month.
Or more.
And they haven't, like, gotten to it yet because, you know, they're backlog, so...
So the date to have the revised drawings in would be the week of the 28th? The 28th, 29th?
That's sufficient time for us all to go over them?
Yes.
The consultants and the board members, yeah?
Yeah, and then I think if, in order for us to have time to prepare a resolution, if we're going to do SEAKER, I mean, I would think if we had, you know, if the Department of Health dragged a little bit, I would think maybe as long as we had something from them the Friday before the meeting, because then we have an agenda meeting on that Monday, that would probably give us enough time to draft something before Wednesday. Does that, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and again, we're not, we're not looking for a final approval letter
No.
From the county health department. Alls, alls that we want to know is that what you're, like, proposing will be considered by them, and they're not going to just reject it. Because if they reject it, then you're going to have to figure out something, something else. But if he says, meh, you know, I can work with this, that's all, that's all that we're looking, you know, to know, so that we can close, you know, the SEAKER process, and we can give you site plan approval conditioned upon you getting formal Board of Health approval.
It's, I mean, it's always conditional, and anyway, no one get, Board of Health never gives permission until that we, they have a, a fine pipeline, too.
And again, you know, if this wasn't like a unique, a unique case, I mean, as I mentioned to Chris when I talked to him, you know, yesterday, I mean, if we had per tests, you know, that worked, if, you know, the separation to the underground stormwater system appeared to be, appeared to be reasonable based on stuff that we've done in the past, then we really wouldn't be asking for that. But, you know, I think you're going to need a lot of waivers from the health department for what you're, like, proposing. And I hope that, you know, it works. Because quite frankly, if it works, then I probably will want to go use it on other projects that we propose to them, because, I mean, I just know, I can just, you know, we've worked on several projects where the site had no perk in the native soil, and they made, they made, they're making the applicant bring in a significant amount of fill material to make that, like, work. So I can only just tell you based upon what my experience is, but, so, you know, again, like, I hope it works, and alls we're looking for is something from them that says, meh, we can, like, consider this. You know, now, I'm sure he's not going to write it like that or send me an email like that, but even if...
We have letters.
And, and, you know, Jim doesn't like to email all that much, okay? So, I mean, I'll even take a phone call from, like, Jim, because I've worked with Jim for probably 20-something, something years. So if he calls me up and tells me, Pete, we can, like, work with this, then I'm okay with that, because, you know, I trust him.
That's acceptable as well, because it will go into the record. That'll be, that's far secret purposes, that'll be okay, because he'll go in the record saying I spoke with him, it seems to be okay.
So...
So you have lots of options there.
We'll work to get as, as much as we can for you, for that meeting.
Okay.
If it is a phone call...
It's just, it's, it's just a conceptual letter, and they've given, they've given them to us before, saying, details need to be worked up, but yes, conceptually, it's fine for them to proceed. That's basically what all the letters say. So, because you'll be working out more details with them as you go along.
Right. And, and I do want to mention that I did speak with Jim by phone prior to submitting the, the design. So we did kind of talk through the design and our thoughts on, on what we were considering and what we were going to be proposing for the site. So we did talk through it by phone before we submitted it, so it wasn't like we were kind of submitting something blind to him that he was going to look at and, and say, what is this that you've submitted? We did kind of talk through it. He's obviously going to want to take a look at the plans, which he now has in his possession, but we'll, we'll wait to hear back from him.
Great, thank you. Pete, one last item, I forgot to mention it. Did you want to talk about the roof leaders being extended? I think you left that out of your letter.
Yeah, I was going to go mention that. You know, Chris, one thing I didn't put in my comment letter, Chris, that I should have mentioned to you when we talked, talked yesterday, was we want to make sure that, that the roof leader pipes get extended into the underground stone area, so that, this way, they can, like, dissipate. And if you put some perforated pipe at the end, I think that we talked about at the last meeting, but I had forgotten to put that in my comment letter. It's not a big deal.
It's small, I just wanted to make sure it was done.
That's something we can, we can make happen. I do want to actually, while we're on that topic, I do want to mention that Chris's comment last meeting with regards to extensions into the underdrain, or into the underground system have been added to the two dry wells that are proposed within the parking area. So there are additional fingers.
That was added, that was added, yeah. I forgot about the roof leaders.
Yep.
Should also be extended into there.
What did you call them? Finger, finger line pipes or something? Finger drains?
Underdrains.
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 You can call them finger drains.
No, 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 I was, there were, there was lots of terms being bandied about when I watched the meeting last time, so...
We make it up as we go.
Anything else from anybody?
Motion to continue?
Motion to adjourn the public hearing to August 6th?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you in three weeks, and let's hope that we have lots of action to take at that point. If you have any problems with getting through to Mr. Napoli, just let one of us know. We know, we know his boss quite well, too, Ms. Clark.
Why don't we take you up on that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Al's Yard. The applicants are seeking a site plan modification to change some current parking, some current parking, I should say parking, some areas where cars are displayed and turning them into parking areas for customers, as well as five slots to sell used cars. Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Tom Cummings. I'm the engineer for the project, and I have a permission statement here from the owner I'd like to present to the board.
You can just submit that to our secretary. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Cummings. Do you want to go ahead and give a narrative description of what you're proposing?
Okay. This is an existing salvage yard with multiple parking spaces, and the owner also resides on the, on the site in his home. And he would like to sell used cars from the site as, as a secondary use of the property that goes in hand with the junkyard. And as such, he would like to have five spaces designated as sales spaces or display spaces for cars that he would like to sell. And according to the town Hyde Park Code, it requires one customer parking space for each of the sale spaces. So we've designated five sale spaces and five customer parking spaces on the lot, converting 10 of the existing junkyard spaces into 10 spaces for these cars and customers. And we've updated the site plan to show that and numbered the spaces, and we've shown the residents on there. And that's basically it.
I believe we're prepared to type the action tonight. There'll be no referrals. Also, set a public hearing, because this isn't really a major issue. There are just a couple of housekeeping details. There's a separate section of code just for car sales. I don't know if you're aware of this. There, you have to locate a sales office, and it has to be labeled. And then there are additional standards within the sales office. You might want to take a look at them, because before Tad can give you, issue you a CO, you need to meet those standards. They include that you can't store, I believe, repair material that's, that's, you can't just put in your sales office, it's got to only be for your sales office. You can go through the details and look. It's not one of those things that she's going to nail your feet to the ground, it's just getting it started, you need to obey the code. Also, it just says the trailers will be moved, but it doesn't say where they're going to be moved to. You should show us where they're going to be moved, because one of the trailers, if you're just going to move it out of the 20-foot buffer, it looks like it'll block one of the customer parking spaces, if I eyeballed it correctly. I'm not an engineer, again, but Tad asked me to make sure that you say where you're going to locate the trailers to exactly, so they don't block somehow your customers from getting in. And then last, there was no indication of whether or not you want to change the sign that they have now to indicate that there are car sales there. If you do, it would be smart just to add it on to this package. That's all. Those are the housekeeping things that I saw. Mr. Sotero, any comments?
No, not on this one.
Ms. Paul Doherty, any comments?
No.
Then let me start to my right. Mr. Mercidiano, any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
No.
Mr. Gro...
None?
I'm deferring to add his answer.
My only question is, we had a similar request, not exactly the same, and the 50-foot buffer, does that become an issue anyplace in this plan?
So the, the zoning law has separate requirements for scrapyard and for used car sales. And so this scrapyard is existing, and they're changing the used car sales, but the used car sales doesn't require this new 50-foot buffer. On the other application the board's reviewing, you're making a new line, and that's why the buffer requirement kicks in.
Just in that section of change, that's important to note.
Right, just in that section of change.
So since there are no changes in the general area where the buffer is, the new code is a 50-foot buffer rather than a 20-foot, so you don't have to make a change to the overall site plan. The Maltz, who also have a scrapyard, are adding, they're changing the lot line next to it, so the area where they're changing the lot line has to, the 50-foot buffer now has to come into compliance. So, and we have on file now a judgment, a rendering, an opinion by Ms. Moss, that the used car sales are accessory use to the scrapyard because they're already bringing in cars and selling parts of them. So to her, it's sort of similar. So any other issues, Mr. Signa, that you want to raise?
Nope, that's it.
I've given you mine. That's just that you need to locate a sales office and label it, and look in the standards in our code. I don't remember the section of code, do you, off the top of your head, that deals with?
It's 108-27.
There you are. Used car lots, regulations and standards. Just go through that to make sure that when, because I, he needs a CO. Don't want any problems. And if he wants to change the sign, like I said, he should do that now. And then just show us where the signs, the trailer's going to go. That does have to be submitted right now, just on a final set, sign, site plan that I would sign. I also don't remember, I think we need new signature blocks on there for chairman's signature. I believe, I think you need new signature blocks for the chairman. You have the old when Ms. Chris Bell was the chair. So, um, make it a motion to the public hearing for August 6th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file so we can type the action?
So, what's the date to submit those changes by? Before the August 6th public hearing or?
Well, board members, how do we feel about this? The public should have the right to...
Or those conditional things or?
Would just one set, just one plan be acceptable for us to look at on this, the time being?
I would think so.
So, four sets?
We're not making a major change.
This is really pretty minor.
Moving anything closer to anybody's house or?
No, I mean...
We'll need one for, you know, consultants.
That's what I was going to say, do you guys want a full set that has, that shows the changes, the sales office?
Plan, right?
Sorry, one sheet.
I'm good with what we...
Yes, it's only one plan. That's what I'm saying, do you want a new sheet, I guess I should say? Do you want a new full-size sheet for each of you?
Yeah.
So, one for Pete, one for Victoria, and one for the file?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we'll need three new big ones, that's all, nothing else?
The cutoff for the next meeting is July 23rd. We just gave Dollar General until the twenty, I don't remember, twenty, twenty-eighth?
You can have until the 28th to submit.
Because there's an extra week.
Keep us out of trouble.
You're welcome. Thank you, Victoria. And again, just three full-size. Thank you. Uh, oh, we need to type the action refer, Chan, you have the file?
Okay, resolution number fourteen twenty-four. Whereas an applicant in Al Hoteling has submitted an application to site plan amended to establish a used car lot at the existing salvage yard located eleven Beck Road in the Green Belt District, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby classifies the project as an unlisted action under seeker for which their, and uncoordinated review will be conducted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we'll see you, um, on August 6th, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Hyde Park Town Center. Mr. Murphy is recused and Mr. Bickford, you are back up with the planning board.
Yeah.
Find some room for John.
I think that's already been set up.
Thank you.
I think, excuse me, they had already set that up for the camera.
Yeah, that's okay. Welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
For the record, this is Eric Niler of Tinkelman Architecture. And I'm just going to turn it over to you, you can describe, I know we, this is similar to what we saw four years ago, three years ago?
Um, actually, it's, uh, it's different, it's simpler.
Yeah, it's not simple.
And calmer, I think, as well.
The towers are gone?
Yes, that became kind of complex, uh, and ultimately it seemed unnecessary. So, the, the idea now is to kind of, uh, make the building harmonized more so with the other buildings on the, on the site, almost at campus. It almost is because some of the other buildings have a kind of nice craftsman flavor to them, which definitely fits in with the town. And we, um, I think after looking at other options, the ones you're thinking of, we kind of pulled it back in and it's a little bit more like the other buildings. So, there would be, we would strip off the, uh, the multi-colored stuff that's on there now, we would repaint all the columns, uh, a single, a single color. We'd also bring in a sort of secondary, a sort of A/B idea, so that some of the columns would be made bigger and that will help reinforce the, uh, the, the sort of entry form for the CVS and the entry form for the, um, for Williams. And we'd replace, uh, some of the details, the dental details with a calmer, calmer-looking, uh, battens and, uh, and hardy shakes. And then the entire facade of the, of the colonnade, I would call it, would get replaced with hardy board siding and trim boards. So, it'll all be, uh, much more clean, I wouldn't say contemporary, it'll be much more, uh, freshened up and more in keeping with the rest of the shopping center.
If I noted, you plan to add new shingles to the entire site, is that correct?
Well, this, uh, to, to the whole, the whole front of the, uh, above the columns would be new hardy board.
And well, it's also, it says new asphalt roof shing...
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct, we're going to re-roof the, uh...
You're re-roofing as well?
Right.
Okay, and then the other change that was not envisioned last time, I mean, I, I think this is very attractive, I like the fact that you varied the column size and the column width. Um, does kind of articulate it nicely, but it also gives it a nice harmony. Um, you also now have, it's not shown here, but you have a new entrance to St. Francis on the side?
Right, that's, uh, it's just one of the black and white elevations, we would kind of do...
I can see it now, you're right.
Yeah, we would do the same treatment to that entry piece that, that we're doing to the, uh...
Right there.
Yeah, so just that little piece alone would get the same kind of similar treatment that we're giving to the entry forms of CVS, so a new hardy board and, uh, replacing the, the dental trim with a kind of, uh, more craftsman style elements.
And I have a request from several residents, if you're going to replace the clock, can you make sure it works?
Uh, so noted.
That may be a condition of approval, we'll see. Um, I, I, I'm going to turn it over to the board in just a moment for, uh, comment as well as to the consultants. But I also want to note that even though this is not your expertise because you're from the architecture side, and I think you've done a very handsome job, literally, uh, the applicant is also requesting new signage. What I believe they're proposing is some specific signage for current tenants, but they also want us to, if I'm following this correctly from Ms. Leibert's letter, they'd like us to approve sign areas and offer a maximum of up to twenty-two inch letters so that whenever tenants would change, they'd come back in just for a quick sign permit that would say, this is still the same letter size, but it's a new name, which would be a lot easier.
Right, it seemed to me that they were looking for a blanket authorization for a certain sign area and sign letters, which I think makes sense on a site like this where there's a lot of tenants and a lot of change.
Me too, me too.
The also, yeah, the signage concept is also that it would, uh, reduce the kind of, um, I don't know, helter-skelter nature of the current signage, so it'd be much more unified in its sort of, uh, uh, style. I think there's, there's a board behind this of the signage.
Well, we would also, I'll note that the, all the signs would be what we've been approving lately, which would be the halo lit or the reverse lit, um, letters so that the light reflects back onto the panel behind it, making the letters appear to come out like 3D or glow.
What is the height of the Williams sign now?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, so that's going to be replaced, that wouldn't stay as part of this?
Yes, it would be replaced.
Okay.
The current Williams sign, uh, is, uh, thirteen inches and they're asking for twenty-two. So, that's the other thing is I want to make sure the board, uh, colleagues, consider the size of the, of the letters that are being proposed. Um, the letters being proposed for the entire site are roughly the size of the pharmacy under CVS as current, that are up there right now, if I measured correctly. So, that's why you'd see larger, in other words, all the signs would grow based on the distance that it's set back. Um, and the only one they're proposing twenty-four on would be for CVS, and they're saying that's because that's an angle from the initial entry, so it's even further, and of course, it's the largest, it's the anchor tenant along the side, it's got the largest signed panel with the pediment over it. But this will be down the line for us to put into our resolution. So, let me start with the consultants. Pete, anything to add? Ms. Paldaro? Mr. Signa?
Yeah, my only concern talking about the signs and recognizing that it may be part of our code issue, if I want to find a store, uh, I have to read all those signs and they're all the same color with the same background. Nothing stands out, which could be a conflict, of course, to what we want to do, except, except Ace, we've got, we could see theirs right away. Um, and I'm just thinking of a person driving by who's looking for a store and knows it's in the shopping center someplace.
Well, if they're driving by, they should theoretically be using the tenant directory sign out at the front first to identify that it's in there. And then you drive up in the parking lot and take a look around, so, um, but that's a good point, but it is, our code requires that they have this stylus, yes, this design unity, so...
Excuse me? I know it does and, uh...
Obitardicta over there. That's, Ms. Paldaro can explain that term. Um, any other comments, Mr. Signa?
Nope, that's all that I have to...
Mr. Bickford? Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I guess I've got, uh, a couple of questions, generally I'm, uh, very pleased with what I see. Um, I, I'm kind of curious why the two end peaks are, are different, uh, the treatment, the particle board or whatever, uh, and the little round, uh, decoration, um, are not the same on CVS as they are on Williams, it just doesn't seem, I'm curious why, is there a reason for it or?
It didn't seem necessary to completely redo the Williams facade, frankly, so we, we put more, more, uh, uh, effort into redoing the CVS front. It was, it, it was easier to, given that they're in operation and we're looking not to sort of do more than we, than we, we're trying to be targeted with, with how we, how we go about this. So, we, we're going to change the colors as you see, but we wouldn't go, we wouldn't do the full-on treatment of the, the hardy shakes and the, and the new battens on the Williams furnace piece.
Then...
And it's making them a little different too.
Then why not do CVS the same way Williams has done to get them back?
We're trying to make them somewhat different, but not have them, I mean, they're, they anchor the ends, but they're different, so it was just a way to try to get a little bit of variety into it.
Okay, thank you. Um, it was my recollection, I may be wrong, I forgot to drive by today to look at it, uh, isn't there, doesn't it say Ace on the peak on, on the Williams end?
It does, but the, the, if you look at the sign, if you look more closely, there's a lot of gobbledegook in there because they're meant to just be placeholders. But yes, it does say Ace.
Yeah, so, it just, it, you know, is that, is that going to be removed and does Ace go along with this, uh, does Williams go along with this, uh, new labeling?
Well, the signage is going to be the subject of separate approvals, I would think, as each tenant changes, they would probably have to come in for sign approval.
Well, they're asking, the, the current application is asking us to approve new signs right now, signs of a bigger dimension.
I guess I would, I would just defer to, uh, I was more involved in the signage.
I know, that's what I was going to say, it's, it's, we, we, Ms. Leibert couldn't be here tonight because her son is in a championship baseball game, I think, and it ran late. So, um, I'll extend that question to her, but when I spoke to her, that's what they were looking for was, as part of the approval was for us also to, because we have to use our discretionary authority to grant the sign, or the dimensional increases, so we would have to do that in a resolution, and I believe they're looking to have all new signs put up at the same time. As we're all aware, signs have to come into conformity in 2015, and so they figured they go ahead and just redo the signs right now.
Yeah, which of course brings up the question, does Ace agree with this, which, uh, I, I think somehow we have to confirm that, uh...
No, that, we don't have to confirm that because we're dealing with the site owner.
If it's checked with Ace, then you have to check with every tenant in the structure.
We're dealing with the site owner, it's the site owner and the, it's the landlord and the tenants who'd have to come to an agreement, I guess, on that. It's a good point, but they, it's, it's between them, not us.
Yeah, I do remember the conversation on that and obviously Ace did have to be part of it.
Yes, they did.
And that, that was an adamant sticking point, so...
Yeah, and I, I can't help but think that that's a potential sticking point as we go forward here as well.
Again, it wouldn't be for us.
Not our problem, no.
We would have proved it and if it never gets changed, that would be because landlord-tenant relations didn't come out right.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, um, the only other question I've got really is, uh, um, the lumber and home center's in a different color, I just, uh, I, I think if you put a different color there, then you're going to have people wanting different colors for messages other places. I just...
It's funny you should say, the color of the sign just to be as approved by the client, but that's not allowed, so we have to approve the color, they don't get to approve it afterwards. So, we're going to, I think we need to have either, we'll have some more discussion when Kelly gets back before the next meeting, but either the signs are a uniform color for design unity, or they, the fonts have to be the same because there's only so many ways you can achieve design unity. And right now, the fonts for each sign or tenant are a little bit different. I mean, I think that what Mr. Signa said was actually making a good point, you might want them to have a little bit of differentiation.
No.
And if that's going to be the font style, then maybe they all need to be the same color, but I'll, I'll make certain that I send an email out to Ms. Leibert tomorrow and copy everybody.
And I'm not convinced that maybe, uh, uh, each tenant's sign should be a different color marching down, uh, marching down.
No, that's what I said, it may be that it's better to have a uniform color and just have the different fonts as they're proposed.
Yeah, to have a different color, uh, I mean, I, I don't think the font has to be identical to, to be consistent.
I'm just saying, under our code, it specifies that you can achieve design unity by either consistent color or consistent font.
Well, you certainly are in terms of font size, pretty much, and, and I think, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm having a problem with each one of those signs being the same color. Uh, I think it's much easier to read if maybe they alternated between, say, red and green or, or some, something to give some differentiation to the tenant so that your eye knows when to stop on one tenant as opposed to another and having them run, run in together. Um, they kind of run in together, when I look at this, they kind of run in together and all the...
I think that is because the signs are all proposed to be the same size. If you go down and look at Stop and Shop, I believe you'll notice that Dollar Gen, Dollar Tree sticks out like a sore thumb, in my own humble opinion, because it's green and nothing else is green, everything else is red. But all those signs are very easily read, just go look at the Stop and Shop sign next time. I think that when you...
We're right across the street in Beltar Plaza.
In Beltar Plaza, those are all, have consistent signs as well, design unity. I mean, it's, it's in the eye of the observer, but at any rate, let's not belabor the sign package tonight while we're discussing really more the architecture because of the applicant's representative tonight. But I will, I'll copy all of this on the board to make sure we clarify more with Kelly about what's going on with the signs. Any other comments, Mr. Bickford?
No, that's it, I, I'm glad to see, uh, the overall improvements, I think it'll be a nice package for the town.
Great, Mr. Gruniger?
Well, I don't want to belabor the sign question, but I will say, I'm not quite sure that twenty-two inches is needed for all of them by a long shot, I think it's quite a bit higher than it needs to be. You do have an entrance sign because it is a plaza, and while I accept that it's set back from the road, you're not going to look for an individual store from out on the road, at least you shouldn't be. Uh, so, I believe that our board discretion certainly should not go up to the twenty-two inch. If you're driving along, you're going to look at each individual store, and my comment on that whole thing is, if they're all the same color, then one's in italic, the next one, maybe it's Times Roman, uh, you can vary the, uh, the style of the lettering and still have design unity by having everything the same color, which I think is a very nice color combination. I applaud, by the way, your architectural efforts here. Thank you.
I'm going to just step in real quickly and say, I agree with you, I think twenty-two inches seems almost obscenely large. One of the reasons why this looks so blurred into each other, why you can't differentiate the signs, is because they're all too big. They're taking up the entire room up there, so every member, think about what you think would be a decent size, because I believe Mr. Niler has sized the tenant panels to be such that they could accommodate the twenty-two inches, um, but I still think that might be extra-large on there. This is not like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, you know, kind of size store.
Michael, I don't know if we need to go back and we probably do not, but I believe when the Ace lettering was put up there, there was some special consideration given to the size of the three letters when we approved this before.
When we approved that, it was given as EBA variance to get there, and that's one of the reasons why we redid the sign code.
Well, it wasn't just the variance, there's a, if I'm remembering correctly, there's a relationship between the A and the CE or something like that, proprietary relationship as part of their logo.
There's a, if I'm remembering correctly, there's a relationship between the A and the CE or something like that. A proprietary relationship as part of their logo. So it may be that they'll need to come in for a specialized approval.
Correct. Again, this is, I just have to work this out because I don't understand how we're conceptually dealing with this with blank spaces, et cetera. They still need to come in for a signed permit.
I thought we, I was under the impression from the materials that we were just going to grant the bonus for the maximum height for the whole plaza, and then the individual, there's going to have to be individual permits.
Would come back through.
Unless, unless they're sure that what they have up is what they want to put up.
Which it isn't.
Then we'd dimension.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I really like this, the architectural detail that you've chosen for this. It matches Hyde Park, I think, way better than the previous one. It's just taking what was there and cleaning it up and making it a little sharper, and I really like it. I would really like the clock to work again.
I'm taking note of that.
As far as the signs, you know, everybody, to me, it's like art. Everybody has their own opinions. This particular site was used as the study site for the change in our signage code, I believe. And so I get it, this thing is set way back. The only problem is, is, you know, as the site owner, they have to realize that by having the larger signs, it does, they'll kind of bleed into each other. But if that's what they want, that's, you know, again, whether it's 22 or 20 inches, I mean, to me at this point, that doesn't make that big of a difference. They're going to have to deal with the tenants, and I understand that every tenant wants their own sign. So however they're going to deal with that is fine. I think having them all red is great. I think that's really what design unity is all about, and we'll deal with Williams when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Hi, I'm very pleased with the design aspects you've added here and different architectural elements. And again, on the signage, briefly, I really like the emphasis you're putting on the center with the town, the town center. To me, if we can reduce the, you know, the size of the smaller stores on the signage, it actually gives kind of like an outdoor mall effect, maybe encourage people to kind of walk through the center versus looking for, you know.
Right. It's a good comment. I'll, I mean, I'll take it back to the applicant and the sign designer. Apologize for not being more plugged into that, that part of the process, but.
Other than that, I think it's going to be, you know, a great, great change for the plaza and, you know, really pleasing to the eye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merciliano?
Yeah, very nice plan. I like it.
Thank you.
I'm not quite sure where we stand with the signs, but I imagine it's going to be dealt with in the future.
We may have an offline meeting on this one.
That's a plan.
But overall, I think you've heard nothing but positive reaction, except for maybe the special requests from, as I said, many neighbors over there kept saying, can you get them to fix the clock? So I'm bringing it up for you. At any rate, we're prepared to type the action and refer it to DC Planning in a 239M tonight. Somebody has this. Ah, thank you.
I do. Resolution 7-10E, July 16th, 2014. Whereas an application for site plan amendment approval to improve the facade of an existing shopping center located at 4246 Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, and the Town Center Historic District, the project, has been submitted to the planning board by Kelly Leibert of KARC Planning Consultants on behalf of Cosmo Town Center LLC, the applicant. And whereas the project includes standardized signage and decorative upgrades, and whereas pursuant to 108-24.2F of the zoning law, the planning board may at its discretion grant an additional inch to the maximum permitted letter use or height of 10 inches for every 20 feet, a wall sign for business or structure is set back from the primary access highway up to a maximum of 24 inches if it finds that the additional size is necessary or appropriate due to such circumstances as the sign's distance from the road, the design speed of the road, or the size of the building on which the sign is placed, or that the symbol or graphic is of special aesthetic merit. And whereas the applicant has requested the planning board grant a blanket sign bonus to permit a maximum letter height of 22 inches for all signs in the plaza, with the exception of 24 inches for the sign on the northwest corner of the structure. And whereas pursuant to 6, New York, CRR, 617-5, the construction or expansion of a primary accessory, non-residential structure or facility involving less than 4,000 square foot of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or use and consistent with local land use controls is considered a type, oh, I added the word, sorry, is a type-two action. Whereas pursuant to the section 239M, general municipal law, projects located within 500 feet of a state highway must be referred to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby classifies the project as a type-two action, and be it further resolved that the planning board hereby directs a secretary to refer the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to 239M. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Make it a motion to set a public hearing for August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we'll see you back at August 6th, and I'll email Kelly and copy everybody about the sign confusion, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an extra set for county planning, or do you need one? Do you have?
I believe we, I believe we have one already. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bickford. You're now back off, and Mr. Murphy, you're back on. Next item on the agenda is Beatt and Russo. Applicant is seeking approval for a lot line alteration. The law changed, you can come back in now.
That's great.
So briefly, just for the edification of the audience, anybody who might be watching, Mr., am I saying it correctly, Beatt? Is that how you say it? Okay. Mr. Beatt came in a few months ago, just wanting to buy two plus acres to add to his parcel from his neighbor. Because he's in the Green Belt, we discovered that the parent parcel would have to set aside 30% open space, which might have killed the deal. And since there's no house or anything else involved, we suggested to the town board that they change the law so that now if there's a lot line alteration in Green Belt, where there's no new housing lot created, there's no 30% space, open space requirement. In addition, we also determined based on discussion that there's no way to avoid that 30%, because sooner or later, they're going to subdivide it, put a house, and they still got to do it. So, Mr. Beatt patiently waited, and now he submitted his plan to, we actually have a new survey with a line. So let me just quickly turn it over to Pete. Any comments, Mr. Sotero?
Two comments. We'll need a standard planning board approval block on the plan, and then also the, there's a, there's a list of town of Hyde Park zoning requirements over on the right. They're outdated, so that's going to, that's going to have to be updated. References in 1989 zoning code, so.
Mr. Beatt, that means that you have, there has to be a signature block for you saying that you get permission for this to be filed?
No, 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 no. We have that.
Oh, you do?
It's planning board approval.
You also have to have a planning board approval block so that I can sign it once we're through the approvals. Your survey will know what we're talking about, and he also needs to update the zoning chart that's on the side, just a new.
Note that on something, that I could just leave it with me, and I can call him and do that? I don't have.
Do you have an email?
Yes, I do.
What, don't say it over, over the, I've been told about this.
Yeah, once you just come over, after we're done, and you can give it to me, and then I'll, I'll email it to you tomorrow.
We'll get it over to you.
Yeah, no problem.
And you don't have to submit new plans for us for this. Just for, before the final, we need to have that shown.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, I don't remember what the resolution Monday of the chicken coop was.
Well, you'll see.
Okay, so you're going to get to that. I'll leave the chicken coop out of it.
Thank you.
Chicken coop.
Ms. Paul Durham, any comments?
So the, the plan shows a chicken coop. Under, under town of Hyde Park law, if you have, if you're conducting animal husbandry, it requires site plan approval. So if this plan is approved, it's going to be conditioned on you either removing the chicken coop from the plans or coming in to get approval for an animal husbandry operation. We can't tell just from looking whether that's ancient and not in use anymore, or whether it's something current.
Yeah, it's just a small three by five, but yeah. I'll have it removed from the plan. I don't know why he put it on there anyway.
Because he's in the survey, he's surveying everything.
Removed from the plan is one thing, but if it is actually out there and you have, you know.
Change it to store shed.
You have to come in for approval.
Wait, here's what I want to tell you. The only time that we've required everyone to come in for chickens, which is animal husbandry, this has been debated, believe me, by different town boards a lot, is when neighbors complain because they hear chicken sounds or the chickens are going onto other people's properties. There's always been a determination that chickens are not pets, just so you know. So if you remove it from there, you're not going to have a neighbor complain, probably no one's ever going to notice, is what I'm going to tell you. But you didn't hear me say all of that, even though it's on the record. But the one question I do have to ask is, when you, when you buy the new land, are you expanding your chicken operation?
No, no.
Thank you. That's all I need to hear. That's all I heard you hear was, no. Okay. Now, we're prepared, we're prepared to type the action, wait, we didn't type the action before, right? So we're going to, it was a secret determination.
We're prepared to do a secret determination. If you have part two, do you have it handy?
I filled out part two myself of mind. Did anybody else do it?
I had part two.
And?
Fill it out.
I will fill it out.
Oh, wait, any comments from the consultants? Anybody about this? We've all heard about this months ago. Actually, almost eight months ago when you first came in. Thanks for your patience. So, okay, then, we're going to, what we're going to do is do seeker, and then we'll set a public hearing at the same time. We'll explain it. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, part two, the impact assessment. One, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Two, will the proposed action result in change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No. Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, otherwise known as CEA? No. Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies, B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No, and no. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the important historic, archaeological, or architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, and drainage problems? No. Eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human health? No. Go on with the resolution.
Yep, you can.
All right. So resolution adopting a secret determination of nonsignificance, Beatt and Russo lot line alteration, resolution number 13-46. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Now make it a motion to set a public hearing for the minor subdivision for August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you in three weeks, and prior to signing, we need to have, just go talk to Pete, and he'll tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you assigned now?
He signed this.
He signed it.
I did? I didn't sign? Because you handed it to me, I'm sorry. Do you second mine?
She beat me to it.
It just has to go with it.
Yep. Get that back to you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Do you want to, to the board?
A waiver for Littlefield to relocate an oil tank on 25 Call Hollow Road. We have the recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, from a zoning officer, and a variance also from the ZBA, who has this file?
I do. Site plan waiver, resolution number 14-18. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Kristen and Eric Littlefield for property located at 25 Call Hollow Road in the town of Hyde Park.
I'm just letting you know.
And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Littlefield regarding the specific request as submitted in the building department file for Littlefield.
Yeah, I'm.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is Weiss. Applicants are seeking a site plan waiver for an expansion of a deck located at 16 Cove Road, which was in the SAS. We have the recommendation for a waiver from the zoning administrator. We're here at Littlefield, sorry to make you wait if you were. Do we have, who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, site plan waiver, resolution number 14-22. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Stan Weiss on June 23rd, 2014, for property located at 16 Cove Road within the boundary of the town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 the changes are not significant in nature and are in character with the neighborhood. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled Weiss Residence regarding the specific request as submitted on June 23rd, 2014 by Stan Weiss, owner 16 Cove Road, Hyde Park.
Second.
I'm sorry, did you get a second?
I got a second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Hyde Park United Methodist, which I'm guessing that the five of you over there are here for. Finally figured it out. You can come on up if you want to, but we have a recommendation for sign permit, and I know that you guys thought we were really mean, particularly me, about your last sign, but you changed your sign, it looks really nice now.
I don't really like it.
We all really like it.
We like it.
Oh, you're dolls, you're an angel from heaven, your wings I can hear over here fluttering. Thank you. Okay, who has this file?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A4D, United Methodist Church of Hyde Park, date July 16th, 2014, resolution 14-23. Whereas, whereas, be it resolved that the board hereby recommends the sign permit be issued within 10 days of this recommendation as specified in the code.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's compliment on that sign again one more time.
I really, really like that sign.
It's an improvement.
No, we really do. I know we.
It fits really nice.
I think we're a little bit harsh, but it's because you were going from a really nice sign now to what we thought was an ugly sign, and now you've compromised back to a really pretty sign again. It's going to be an asset to this section of town, because this is one of our prettiest sections, I think, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Sorry you had to wait all this time.
No, we're just.
Yes, sir.
You didn't listen to what you said.
Thank you.
I could tell.
Thank you.
I came back and I saw the, I was in Italy last time, I came back and I saw the ZBA gave the, gave the variance, and I was like, what? And then I called, and they said, oh, it's a totally new sign, you're going to love it. Then I did. So thank you. I think the whole community will be happy again.
Yes.
I can guarantee it, and I can guarantee it, it'll solve what you need to have more readable copy, and it stays aesthetically pretty and harmonious with the historic character[1617.66]
Is that what that's called?
It's actually integral to the sign, it holds the light.
Oh, so it's not a swoosh.
It's not a swoosh, I asked, it holds the lights. It's gonna hold lighting.
Yeah, it says it holds the lead lighting somewhere.
Yeah, so, as a consequence, the TEG is co-compliant at ten inches, the Federal Credit Union is five inches, it's code compliant, the line gives it a nice balance. All they're asking for is a variance for the logo that has the globe and the eagle.
It's called the top flange, flange.
What? Whoa, top flange. Oh, thank you. So, has everybody had a chance to read the letter that I prepared?
Yes.
I have.
They get a motion authorizing me to send it to Chairman Donahue?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Next on the agenda is discuss proposed local law two. Proposed local law two, for everyone's benefit, is a redefinition of a residential lot. Anybody, any comments on it?
I have two.
Ms. Persigna, please, comment away.
The first one is, I noticed that the proposal really applies only to neighborhood district. Why doesn't it apply to all districts, including Greenbelt? And my second is, I do not object to restrictive codes and for the improvement of the community, but how will it be enforced? There are issues in the town that violate code, that are not enforced, and what happens is it leads to frustration and to a point that it negatively impacts community relations.
In this specific instance, as it's been explained to me, Ms. Moss and the town are, this is relates, or what's occasioned this, although you're right, it will affect all properties. It shouldn't just be in the neighborhood district, in my opinion at least, but what happened was is the parcel that is sitting at the entrance to Green Tree? Wait.
Field?
Yes, Green Tree. The parcel on the left is, had a commercial use, it was a fueling station, and that has ceased over a year. Under our code, once a use ceases for over a year, then the code, that use is gone, so it then has to apply to the new zoning district. The non-conforming, in other words, probably non-conforming is no longer applicable. So, in a court case, when this was brought up, that you couldn't store the trucks that were being stored there, apparently the owner of the site has not granted permission to the person who, I guess, stores the trucks. The judge decided that they couldn't prove that it was a residential lot, because there's a commercial structure on it. A similar example, by the way, would be when we dealt with the old Roosevelt Firehouse that had been a municipal use, and that lapsed. This is the one that's on Cream, the corner of Cream and I guess Duchess Hill, maybe, or is it Dorset?
H and H Contract.
Yeah, H and H Contract.
Commercial.
Right, so what had happened was there, TAD had determined that that was a residential lot, because the municipal use had lapsed for well over a year. But there was no one to challenge it, and it actually worked out for the gentleman who bought it. In this case, it was challenged in the courts, and so he said, you don't have a definition of a residential lot, and so what this does is to say, it's a lot that even if it doesn't have improvements, or if it has a commercial improvement, whatever is on it, if the commercial use is over, then it's still a residential lot. So, I believe it's being, it's being proposed to help with this one particular circumstances. And the other point that Mr. Persigna's making is that it right now says that it's just in a neighborhood district, and I think the reason why they did that was because if you look in Greenbelt, there are, there's actually a number of commercial uses that are allowed with special use permit and site plan. In neighborhoods, you're much more restrictive as to what commercial is allowed there. It's only a few things, like charity, cultural institution, I think in a cemetery.
Large lots in the Greenbelt.
Yes, and the large lots are in the Greenbelt, so you may have situations where there's commercial uses that have lapsed, but I think that this is probably the only one I can think of in particular that's, that's been a problem, both in the courts as well, so that's, as far as I know, the answer. Chan, you wanna add in there?
One thing I wanna add is, I think it's kinda stupid when you look at the lot, it, what are you gonna put, a house up there and have your kids run into nine G and then fall into creek in the back?
No one.
Okay, so I mean, it's, it's, it's a commercial lot, okay, and for us to structure a law for the benefit of one lot, which logically doesn't lend itself to the solution to start with, I, I think it ought to be addressed in a different way if people want to address it, not the way they've chosen to do it.
It's actually, it's in the neighborhood district, so it's, the way that when Supervisor MacArthur, when they adopted the two thousand and five zoning, on the map, it's in the neighborhood district, so it's actually not a commercial lot anymore, which is a shame. I actually argued that maybe neighborhood business districts are supposed to be around neighborhoods. This is the only neighborhood that doesn't have a neighborhood business district around it, it has nothing. All those lots around it, like the old police facility.
I'm just gonna come at, I mean, this is just like the old police building too, Michael.
Correct.
That belongs as a commercial, not residential lot. So, I mean, anyway, if you're, if you're asking my opinion, I think we're running illogically in the wrong direction. We need to structure whatever it is to be a little more logical and not make the law to fit circumstances, because some people want it to end up that way, and I'm always concerned about people in the town trying to make a living, okay, and not being allowed to bring their van or truck or what it is, and for years and years and years, people have had the right to, you know, have little businesses that are not intensive to their neighborhood, you know, where they drive out and leave, okay, I'm very concerned we're gonna get into.
Well, that portion, that portion of the law is not changing, it's just the definition of a residential lot that's proposed.
You know, but that's all I'm.
Are you guys suggesting that we should instead suggest that they rezone the area to neighborhood business?
That's what I would do.
Actually, Michael, I happen to agree with you, because I agree with Chan, that, you know, we shouldn't be tailoring our town law for a single lot legal situation.
Well, again, that's what, what drove it, that it would actually, I mean, it applies across the town.
Well, then it.
Doesn't make sense.
It, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me to rewrite the code for a single lot. If it's gonna apply across the town, then we need it to apply to every district, which it doesn't.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, I think it needs to go back for a minor redraft.
I should add also, I should also add that some members of the zoning Board of Appeals have also been weighing in, there was a public hearing on this on Monday, and from what I could see, I watched it, they're pretty much on the same page as this. They think that it's, that it needs to be applied to all zoning districts, if that's what it's going to do, that would have residential lots in the first place, and they're looking at other ways to solve it. So, the town board may withdraw the law, because it's just proposed, just letting you know, based on what they hear from this.
So, basically, as written, I won't support it.
And, and you agree, neighborhood business district?
Yeah, I think it's interesting, you know, knowing the background, but the point that you make, that here's a neighborhood without, that could be the reason why no one wants to buy those businesses, is because what can they put there? If you were to rezone that as a neighborhood business district, it becomes a lot more appealing to someone to wanna go in there and make it a commercial enterprise that supports the neighborhood and then gets rid of this problem more organically, because now you're using the lot for the way it needs to be. What you have, what you have here is just, it's, they're.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't addressed the police building, which goes back, you know.
I'd rather see a neighborhood business district that includes that lot, and that might get rid of some of those empty places.
The only uses I think that are allowed in neighborhood for this would be like a plant nursery. There's just a small amount of things that it could be, so.
And then the other thing is, if they do this, does this prohibit someone, many, many people bring home work trucks?
That law's already on there.
That they, that that's okay?
That's, that law is already on, I'm just telling you, that you can, that you can, as someone who owns multiple vehicles, I'm just saying that, that law is already on there. However, I don't believe there have been any complaints for people who, what happened was, this is like, maybe eight or ten years ago, there was a series of neighbors who were complaining about one neighbor, who was bringing like five big trucks every night and putting them on his lawn, and one of the neighbors wanted to sell the house, and the first thing the realtor said was, that's a problem. So they complained, and then, as it turns out, this is way back when, like I said, this is many administrations ago, they looked into it and discovered that there were other neighbors who had made similar complaints about certain properties, where they were just storing too many commercial vehicles. So what the law that was put in then does is it says, you can do this if you get site plan approval, or you can't do it unless you get site plan approval with more than one.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's, that's what's happened there, so.
So this was more about just defining residential lot.
Right.
And I would just, I personally rather just see a rezone right there to make it what it should be.
Gotcha. Mr. Oliver?
I agree with Ms. Dexter on this, with the rezone, I just fear that by changing the, you know, the term residential lot with these vacant buildings in that area, you might run into a bigger problem down the road with another vacant building that now you can't do anything with, because it's lost its commercial capability.
Well, again, on all of these, they've lost their commercial capability. This is just what the judge decided that he couldn't take, they couldn't remedy the action, because there was no definition of residential lot. But if someone wanted to buy that right now, it's a neighborhood district, the commercial use lapses, for TAD's purposes and the way it would come to us for her to review it, it would be, they'd have to propose a residence, which no one's gonna, maybe you could get an apartment building there, but you're not, you're not gonna have.
That particular lot has a pollution problem, the kitchen across the street, all right, and, I mean, the town doesn't even want it, because they take it for passes.
No, the town, the town.
The county doesn't.
I was gonna say, what happened is, is that the DEC did the remediation, and then put the bill on the tax, did a tax lien on it. The county, which is supposed to take them over, doesn't wanna take it over, because if they do, then they have to pay the DEC cover cost, the recovery cost. So, I believe that the town board is working with the Attorney General, because there are some steps they could take to let the town get it back, but everyone has to agree that they don't get the money, which is always a problem.
That's gonna be hard, yeah.
Frank, do you have any comments on that?
No, I agree with Ann, it sounds like a zoning issue.
Okay, I think I'll have a draft letter sent out to everybody. And the last thing to tell, to, and I just added this for, just to make sure you guys know, you know, the school district has proposed some signs, of which a lot of them are code compliant, you've seen them, but two of them have digital, areas where they'll have digital displays that change a lot. And there's a court case, it's called Monroe, and what it basically says is that not all the things that school districts do are exempt from town codes. Victoria and Warren Raplansky, the town attorney, have taken the position that the signage is clearly not proprietary and therefore should be covered under the code. Not buildings, not other stuff, but these are sort of accessory uses as signage. Mr. Persigna, as you know, has ample experience with this, because he actually was a deputy superintendent, I believe is the title of school.
Assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent of schools. So, the school district and the town board, and Ed and I have had a couple of meetings discussing what the process would be, they admit that they have to have approvals for some of them, because one sign for FDR High isn't even on premises, it's on DOT right-of-way. DOT won't let them put it up unless they get plenty of word approval. I've told them that because it's internally lit, the electronics section, we couldn't approve it, but under the Monroe case, established what they call Monroe hearings, that someone has to undertake, and basically there's seven criteria, but they try to look at a balance of, does this, does the need of the school outweigh the need of the town in this area? Or does the need of the town outweigh the need of the school in this area? So you go through and you assemble all of it, and ultimately, if we decide that they need these digital displays, they don't need to go back to the ZBA for variance, the planning board as the lead agency of the Monroe hearing would be able to grant it. In other words, it obviates the needs for variances. So, I bring that up too, because we're supposed to be having, there's supposed to be another meeting shortly between Victoria, Warren, Aileen, and the school board, or rather, the school administration, about what the next steps are, because Victoria prepared some forms for them to fill out, the application forms. The other thing is, is that Hyde Park Fire Department asked for a meeting with me, and only me, and they had some signs they wanted to propose, and again, they had Nancy, I can't think of her last name, but Gloody Signs, who represents the school district as well, and this is the sign they proposed, this isn't really showing the digital things, but all of, like, the image would change, this copy could change, they, the school and the fighters have both told me proudly that they can show Amber Alerts this way, and, you know, get meaningful data out to people, so the fire department, I explained to them that they would have to come to us, just like Roosevelt did for site plan approval, they would have to come to us, or they have to hold their own Monroe hearing. Monroe hearings must be publicly noticed, so they'd be advertised in the Kipsey Journal, and they must be noticed one place publicly, which would probably be, for their purposes, they could just put it up on the bulletin board in their fire department, so we might not know anything about it. But one of the things they were concerned about is if they did it with the planning board, take issue, and I said, I can't answer for the planning board. In the meantime, Nancy of Gloody also gave me sort of a wealth of material that purports to show that there's no difference between this and any other billboard that you see, it's digital. And I analyzed what she supplied to me and decided that it was like apples and oranges, because what I was seeing in the study was that they were taking it, showing areas that were freeways, it said, and arterials, meaning high traffic, big wide areas, and they're looking, saying, does anybody notice, look at that particular billboard that has this digital copy on it more than the other billboards? In other words, they were looking, saying, here's a range of billboards, is someone looking at this longer? And they discovered that, not necessarily, in some cases they were, in some cases they weren't. But I found it inconclusive, because for the schools, we don't have a lot of billboards around. This is, this sign seems to me to be designed to attract attention. So I asked Ed to, as backup to me, because I ran it through them quickly, and he has more experience with his background, says a homework assignment on Monday to read through all the studies, and he gave me his report. And I thought you might wanna summarize it.
Basically, as Michael had indicated accurately, the report of the study that they submitted really had nothing to do with the locations we're talking about. And in fact, all it talks about, and all the pictures you have, are you going down a highway, and you can look at a billboard, or you can look at a continuously variable billboard, one of these digital things, and what's the impact of that? Does that cause people to slow down, or is there an increase in accidents? And I said, no, there isn't. That, I'm not, nobody's seeing that. Our concern is in a school setting, and we don't have, they didn't give us any studies that reported that, but I've heard from two separate individuals anecdotal evidence that when you have one of these digital signs in front of a school, it certainly causes traffic variations, because people slow down, and in two different places, and John can point to what he saw, I guess, catch him, people were slowing down because they were seeing names, and they wanted to read names. In another case, people were stopping to take pictures of their children next to the signs. So, it is a distraction. If you look at general provisions in other municipalities regarding these things, they say keep digital signs away from intersections, traffic control devices, pedestrian walkways. We're proposing, the school districts proposing to put it where? At the intersection of the, of the high school, or, in the Violet Avenue case, you've got walkways with students. We have a decrease in speed limit, for what reason, but because we want everybody to be more cautious, so now we have the signs going up and with information that parents are going to be interested in reading. So that's basically what I saw in the report, and then looking at it further, that's what I found. Thank you.
And I'm gonna throw in my two cents worth, living right off of South Cross Road, you come southbound on nine G, making that turn onto South Cross Road, where there is a traffic light, it's fifty-five mile an hour, dropping to forty, you have a traffic control signal there. The school board just got finished asking the town board, which they did, changing South Cross Road to twenty mile an hour in front of the school, because one child was hit. And we're gonna put a sign right there at that corner, which is not on school premises, it's on state highway premises. If this does not cause an accident and kill someone, I'll be the most surprised person. It's gonna happen within a year, that sign going up. This is, this is the location in all of Hyde Park where we have more junior drivers than anyplace else. That's what you have in a high school, is junior drivers, they're inexperienced, we do not need another distraction in front of them. As far as I'm concerned, a Roosevelt sign, even the fixed one doesn't belong in that corner. I'm just telling you, I feel very, very strongly about this one, Michael.
I just wanna point, no, no, I wanna point out that there's no actual application in front of us that we're discussing, I just wanted to give you a general idea, and also remember that by law, we're required to keep an open mind and listen to everything and consider all evidence before we come to a conclusion. It's, because the school district could also elect to do, to be the lead agency for the Monroe hearing, they could do this, so if that's the case, then we as individuals would be free to come up at a public hearing and speak, based particularly on our experience with signage in general. I would, I would hope that they would have, listen to what our opinions are, but if we do it, then we need to be able to listen to all of the evidence that's gonna be submitted to us, and I'm sure that Nancy of Gloody Signs will have probably even more data than what she just submitted to me. And some of it, like I said, it made sense to me that if you're in a very busy environment, that no, no one billboard's gonna make you go, oh, wow, even if it is continuously, you know, moving with digitals, because there's so much already around you to distract you. But if you add something new, I think that's a different scenario than what the studies were, where it's, there's just one sign there along the way. So anyway, I wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of that, and I'm, I'm going to write a letter or an email, just so I have a formal record, to Hyde Park Fire Department, that if they do have their own Monroe hearing, I'd like to be notified of it, so, so we can all be aware of it. My real worry always is about these signs is safety first, but then also the fact that other people will want them, because we, the Culinary Institute at one point wanted them to announce the conferences they have, Anderson Center had asked for it too, and since signs that are internally lit are not allowed, that stopped, but these are automatically internally lit, so just wanted to give you guys a background. Any other comments? I'll keep you posted, and in the meantime, I get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, it's why we went on so long, we got through a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of that, and I'm, I'm going to write a letter or an email, just so I have a formal record, to Hyde Park Fire Department, that if they do have their own Monroe hearing, I'd like to be notified of it, so, so we can all be aware of it. My real worry always is about these signs is safety first, but then also the fact that other people will want them, because we, the Culinary Institute at one point wanted them to announce the conferences they had, Anderson Center had asked for it too, and since signs that are internally lit are not allowed, that stopped, but these are automatically internally lit, so, just wanted to give you guys a background. Any other comments? I'll keep you posted, and in the meantime, I get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, sorry we went on so long, we got through a lot.
Yeah.